Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, March 4th at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
Council Pro Tem Banks. Absent. Councilman Brightwell.
Here.
Councilman Cruz.
Present.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Council President, we have a call. Oh, I forgot. Oh. I'm so sorry, Councilman Hicks. That's not a reoccurring joke, it's an error. Please forgive me. Councilman Hicks.
Present.
Thank you. We have a call.
All right, thank you. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
All right, we have a very full house this evening, mostly because we probably have a lot of appointments. And we will start with our first appointment of the evening, our Deputy City Clerk.
Thank you. As a Southfield City Clerk, it is my pleasure and honor to swear in our new Deputy City Clerk, Ms. Kelda London, for the city of Southfield. I am pleased to recommend her appointment, as she is -- will be in accordance with Section 5.9 of the Southfield City Charter. Ms. London is an experienced professional with an extensive background in the performance of all functions associated with the City Clerk departmental operations. I would also like to acknowledge that Ms. London is on track to become a certified municipal clerk within the next year. Thank you, Ms. London. Thank you for joining us, City of Southfield.
There's -- is there anything else you want to add, or do you want a motion?
Excuse me. At this time, sir, Council President, we are asking that council approve the resolution appointing Ms. Kelda London as the Deputy City Clerk and Management Grade 406, with all other rights and benefits afforded to management employees.
Okay. Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the resolution as written. Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the appointment of the Deputy City Clerk as presented. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And now we will swear. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of Deputy City Clerk.
And the duties of the office of Deputy City Clerk.
In and for the City of Southfield, County of Oakland.
In and for the City of Southfield, County of Oakland.
And the State of Michigan.
And the State of Michigan.
Michigan. And say your name.
Kelda London.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, Council President, thank you all very much for your appointment. I look forward to working very diligently in the Clerk's office and look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have mayoral appointments.
I'm before you this evening with four reappointments to the Planning Commission. As you know, the Planning Commission is a very important city commission that vets changes in our zoning, as well as site plans and development proposals. We have a veteran team on the Planning Commission, and four of the members' terms expire this spring. So I'd like to call up if they're -- they've been invited to be here this evening, Anthony Martin, Cynthia Bernoudy, Jeremy Griffiths, and Robert Willis, if you're in the audience. Thank you for -- so I'm looking for a motion from the Council for the reappointment of the said-name persons to the Southfield Planning Commission.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve the reappointments to the Planning Commission for Anthony Martin, Cynthia Bernoudy, Jeremy Griffiths, and Robert Willis.
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Haynes, to reappoint to the Planning Commission Anthony Martin, Cynthia Bernoudy, Jeremy Griffiths, and Robert Willis. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Clerk Jackson?
We will just be swearing you in this evening as your newly appointed in the wish of the Planning Commission or mayoral appointments, if you're being reappointed. You are Mr. Griffiths and Mr. Martin. All right, thank you. Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or --
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
On the Planning Commission.
On the Planning Commission.
In and for the City of Southfield.
In and for the City of Southfield.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And the State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
Say your name.
Anthony Martin, Jeremy Griffiths.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes.
You had a fifth appointment?
Oh, I did.
You want to do the -- you want us to do all the handshaking after, or?
I'll keep that moving right now. Additionally, for the -- we had a vacancy. Ken Peterson, who had been on the City Center Advisory Board for many years, has stepped down, and so I have an appointment that I'd like to make, Charlena Ponders. Ms. Ponders, if you're present.
Hello, how are you?
So I'm asking the Council for a motion to approve Charlena Ponders to fill the seat of Kenneth Peterson on the City Center Advisory Board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Hoag.
I move that we appoint Ms. Charlena Ponder to the Senate Center Board as presented.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to appoint Charlena Ponders to the City Center Advisory Board. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will.
That I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of.
And on the City Center Advisory Board.
And on the City Center Advisory Board.
In and for the City of Southfield.
In and for the City of Southfield.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And State of Michigan.
And State of Michigan.
Say your name.
Charlena Ponders.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Sorry?
For the council appointments?
Yes. Mr. Brightwell is on his -- on his way.
You know, boards and commissions are the lifeblood of the city of Southfield. They're, in essence, the heartbeat of the city of Southfield. And tonight, we have an array of some very wonderful people that have volunteered to sit on the various boards and commissions that we have. And some of their -- some of their comments were outstanding. And I talked to -- and I talked to our president earlier today, that the five individuals that are being appointed, their comments about serving on the board and commission was moving. Our committee of Ms. Haynes and Mr. Hicks, we approved them and proved them to go forward. But I just want to highlight the fact that we have five individuals who are being appointed tonight to the various boards, and they're being singled out right now because of the fact this is a new appointment for them, it's a new appointment for the city, and I didn't -- there's no sense in them getting lost in the crowd of individuals that we have tonight. But they -- their comments about -- and their sincerity in wanting to serve the city of Southfield was moving, and I think one or two of them had tears in their eyes in their commitment to the city of Southfield. And with that, I will call up individuals -- Mr. -- I will be calling up Mr. Alexander Credit for the Board of Review, Ms. Olivia Duval for COSA, and Ms. Lois Jones for COSA, Ms. Georgette Flowers for COSA, Mr. Cedric Corbin for the Total Living Commission.
Okay, what I'm going to do is, we're going to take two offices for the individuals that are going to be appointed to the commission.
Madam, we have to approve the appointments before you swear them in.
Go through the appointment.
For the appointments, we just have to.
Okay, you have to call for the vote.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And I'd like to move approval of the appointments of Alexander Credit, Olivia Duval, Georgette Flowers, Lois Jones, and Cedric Corbin.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, for the appointments of Alexander Credit, Olivia Duval, Georgette Flowers, Lois Jones, and Cedric Corbin. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
All right, thank you.
Madam Clerk.
I will start with Mr. Alexander Credit, appointment to the Board of Review. Hello, Mr. Credit, how are you? Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the Board of Review.
The duties of the Board of Review.
In and for the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, and the State of Michigan.
In and for the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, and the State of Michigan.
Yes, say your name.
Alex Credit.
Thank you, according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we'll have the three individuals that are going to be appointed to the Commission of Senior Adults COSA. That would be Olivia Duval, Georgette Flowers, and Lois Jones. All right. Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Southfield.
And the Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform my duties.
Of the office of Commission on Senior Adults.
Of the office of Commission on Senior Adults.
Say your name.
Say your name.
Thank you, according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Subscribe and swear this before the Thursday, the 4th of March, 2024. I'd like to make a motion to vote on these appointments.
We did.
We did already.
With -- we -- yeah, we just -- are we?
You handled these with a whole list of appointees?
Oh, we didn't do the entire list, we just did the appointments. But were you -- were you going to be swearing in Mr. Corbin? For the youth representative for Total Living?
He's covering the youth representative?
Yeah, right behind you.
He's going to be sworn into a different commission.
Right, okay.
He's different. Corbin, the youth representative. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
And the City Charter.
The City Charter.
Of the City of Southfield.
Of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the youth representative for our Total Living Commission. In and for the City of Southfield, County of Oakland.
In and for the City of Southfield.
County of Oakland.
County of Oakland.
And the State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
State of Michigan.
Cedric Corbin.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Subscribe and swear to me before this 4th of March, 2024. Thank you.
I'd like to point out that Cedric is a student at University High School, and he is a non-voting but youth representative for the Total Living Commission. We haven't had a youth representative on the Total Living Commission in some time, so Cedric, thank you for stepping up.
Okay, wait, these are all the reappointments, and they're certifications, you call their names, okay? And that's it. And I'll handle, little handle this one. Okay.
and they are the -- it's sort of the boots-on-the-ground scenario, the citizens on the ground working. The following individuals are -- they are being reappointed, they do not need to be sworn in. I will call your name, and you will please come forward. And this is a -- the fact that we have so many individuals out tonight, that's testimony to the citizens of Southfield. To the -- reappointment to the Board of Review, Mr. Larry Snyder. Reappointment to the Board of Review, Mr. Willie Davis. Reappointment to the Commission on Senior Adults, Ms. Brenda Chambers Street. Reappointment to the Commission on Senior Adults, Ms. Venetta Mitchell. Reappointment to the Public Arts Commission, Mr. Adrian Ziegler. Reappointment to the Total Living Commission, Sheila Gaddy. Reappointment to the Total Living Commission, Herman Gunther. Reappointment to the Total Living Commission, Shania Garrett-Jared. Reappointment to the Total Living Commission, Patricia McMillan. Reappointment to the Total Living Commission, Ms. Deborah Walton-Metley. Reappointment to the Total Living Commission, Sir Louis Williams. Reappointment to the Veterans Commission, Ms. Barbara Selden. Reappointment to the Wildlife Commission, Ms. Sarah Vitimilia. Reappointment to the Wildlife Commission, David Schaefer.
All right, Counsel, what say you?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move that we approve the reappointments to the Board of Review for Mr. Larry Snyder, Mr. Willie Davis. To the Commission on Senior Adults, Ms. Brenda Chambers Threat, and Ms. Venetta Mitchell. To the Public Arts Commission, Adrian Ziegler. To the Total Living Commission, Sheila Gaddy, Herman Gunther, Shania Jared, Patricia McMillan, Deborah Walton Metley, and Mr. Louis Williams. Reappointment to the Veterans Commission, Mrs. Barbara Selden. To the Wildlife Commission, Sarah Vermiglio and David Schaefer.
Support. All right. It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Hicks, for the reappointments of the Board of Review, Commission on Senior Adults, Public Arts Commission, Total Living Commission, Veterans Commission, and Wildlife Commission as presented. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Just in time for a commercial, all the commissions in the city of Southfield is listed on page four of our calendar. So if you're interested in serving on any board or commission, look on page four of your calendar. They are listed with their meeting date and hours. They are listed with their meeting date and hours.
All right, next we have Communications. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future. Each speaker will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Fred Nager. Mr. Nager, did you want to speak during public comment or when your item is up for discussion later on?
We're just here for the.
For the cornerstone?
The Cornerstone Plaza that we have three prospective tenants to take the Kroger space, and that's what we're here for.
We're going to get to that shortly.
Oh.
I just don't know if you have any additional comments?
Oh, do I have any?
Or during public comment, not during, not about your development? Are you okay? Okay. So we'll call on you shortly.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. The next is Jay Rubenstein. Is that? Do you also have a planning item, or is it?
I didn't hear you. Did you say Jan Rubenstein?
It's, yes, I guess.
Okay, that is me.
I said Jay. I couldn't read the first, the first name.
All right, I didn't hear you from back there. We do have a matter that's on the agenda, so I would just reserve my comments for that time, if that's okay.
Which item is that?
It's item F.
Okay, no worries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes Communications. All right, next we have a presentation that our city treasurer will be filling in for the Oakland County Treasurer.
Good evening, Your Honor, body. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of the Oakland County Treasurer, Robert Wittenberg, who asked me to discuss with the public the looming tax foreclosure deadline that's coming up for us. I have a timeline for you. You can see on your screen over here. And what it is, is basically the deadline is March 31st, that people have to pay up their delinquent taxes for anything that was from the years of 2022 and prior, unless they have a payment plan already in place with the county treasurer's office. Otherwise, if the payments are not made by April 1st, then the property becomes foreclosed. And then the next stage would be that the county auctions off the properties, and that takes place between July and November of 2024. So we want to encourage everyone to take action, resolve any issues that are outstanding on their properties, any delinquent taxes, so that this way they'll be able to avoid having to lose their house potentially. I mean, it's the largest investment that people make, and people have put a lot of time and money into their houses, and so we want to work with everyone to be able to keep it that way and have their house. The county takes over tax collection. The Southfield Treasurer's Office collects up until the end of February. Our deadline was February 29th. March 1st, we close our books, and then they take over at the county in terms of collecting any delinquent taxes. So if anyone did not make their payment for the taxes for this past year, for example, now we direct them to make the payments to the county treasurer's office, and we can give them an updated amount of how much that's going to be. The interest rate, when it's at the city level, is 6% per year, but when it goes to the county, it becomes 12% per year. And there's a 4% administrative fee that's put on there as well. And so definitely, we encourage that the correct amount is provided and sent in, and we're happy to assist. Also, there are resources available to help make arrangements with the county. First of all, the county treasurer's office telephone number is 248-858-0611. Once again, 248-858-0611. And they have payment plans that they work out with people to, if you can't pay the full amount in one shot, hopefully they'll be able to work with people, and as long as it's a timely basis, the payments are made, then you could stay in the house and be able to keep making those payments. But with the rate of interest that they charge, I would encourage people to pay it off as quickly as possible. Otherwise, that interest can start, unfortunately, taking over a major chunk of the payments being made. In addition to that, there are other resources. While I'm up here, I just want to remind our viewing audience that are available for homeowners, and we encourage you. Assessing notices were sent out to everyone this past month, and you should make sure that if this is your primary residence that you're living in, you should make sure that you're getting the principal residence exemption, and that's the P R E. It should be at 100%. If your P R E is not at 100%, you should contact the Southfield Assessing Office. Their telephone number is area code 248-796-5230. Once again, the Southfield Assessing Office, 248-796-5230. Another item that's taken care of by the assessing department is also poverty and hardship exemptions. And that's something that has to be an application that's done prior, before tax season, and they'll be able to work with people. But it's really got to be a very, it's basically at the poverty level to be able to qualify for that exemption. So you can contact them, and they'll be able to give you more information. Another item is the disabled veterans exemption. If someone has 100% disability and they're a veteran, there's documentation that'll be required to be presented, but it's administered through the Southfield Assessing Department as well. Once again, their telephone number, 248-796-5230. And one last item from the State of Michigan, now that we're entering the income tax season, and many of you still, that April 15th deadline were actually extended in Michigan, but is looming out there. But the telephone number for the State of Michigan, if you are owed a homestead property tax credit, And I encourage people, even though they may not have substantial income, or they feel that they're below the level that they need to file for income taxes, but there's still homestead credits that they can get, and money coming back to you that you're leaving on the table because taxes were not filed. The state taxes need to be filed to be able to receive that credit. So if there are any questions, we're happy to assist in the treasurer's office as well. Our telephone number is 248-796-5200. Once again, 248-796-5200 for our Treasury Department, or if you can come over and come to our counter, and we would be happy to be able to assist and answer any additional questions that you might have. But thank you very much for your time, and if any questions from any of the elected officials, I'm happy to answer.
Councilman Hicks?
Good evening, Treasurer Loenberg.
Good evening.
You gave some very meaningful and useful information. I assume this is on Oakland County's website? The information that you just gave?
Yes.
Is it on our website for the city as well?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So we try to have a link to be able to provide people to be able to get to the county as well. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Treasurer, do you happen to know how many Southfield homeowners have until the deadline, or how many are in jeopardy?
We, I don't have that information. I'll be able to email that to you and all the council members by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Councilman Brightwell?
Mr. Loenberg, you had asked about this earlier, and I just want to share it with the community. I had never seen this in Southfield last weekend, and I happened to be going on a little road trip, and I saw stuff being taken out of individuals' homes, being placed on the lawn, and on the sidewalk on the lawn. And I kind of knew something was bad was happening, but I didn't, I had never seen that in Southfield. And obviously, and you graciously gave me the the who, why, when, and what was happening. When you looked, you scaled through the history online. If you could just, not just scare individuals, but just give some individual reality, the reality of not paying your taxes and/or the worst-case scenario, because you gave it to me today, and quite frankly, I, I'm not a, I'm not a snob, not a rich kid, and all this stuff. I just never seen that in Southfield, so I had to be informed.
So foreclosures are a serious matter, and the county wants to do everything possible to avoid foreclosures from happening. And this property that you were talking about, that you had asked me about, we only maintain records of payments that were made to the City of Southfield. We don't maintain the county payments that are received. So I can't vouch for what was paid to them at what time period, but this property had a history of non-payment on a timely basis, going back to 2016. And unfortunately, it got to the point where the property was taken over by the county treasurer. It was foreclosed back in 2023, and it was sold at auction to another individual. And in the process, they have to go through, you know, an eviction process of the person that was in there. But the items that you saw on the front lawn, that was the result of a foreclosure situation, where the new owner actually acquired the property back in October. When we looked at the ownership transfer, they purchased the property in October, but it took until now to finally get the items out of the house. And so that was the situation. But definitely, that's, we want to do everything we can to avoid that from happening.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, Counsel, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Treasurer. All right. The next part of our agenda are the consent agenda items. These items are considered routine or non-controversial or have previously been discussed. Counsel, do you have any items that you would like pulled for further discussion? Councilman Hicks?
B.
All right. Councilmembers, any other item you want pulled? I believe we did see our city engineer walk in. So what is your question, sir? Go ahead.
All right, good evening. Couple of questions, and if we lifted this prior, please forgive me. Have estimates been acquired to do both streets?
Yes.
And can they be, can the work be completed by end of 2025?
Yeah, we do fully anticipate the North Park Drive to be fully rebuilt in 2024, and that gives time to finish the design for Rutland, and then that would be 2025 construction.
And I'm assuming that's factoring in the water main work?
Yes.
That will have to be done?
Yeah.
If approved, how will this be communicated and the residents in that area be accommodated?
So we would have a public meeting. For North Park Drive, it's going to be especially critical between all of the residential properties we have there, and it's a main route that Providence Hospital uses as well for their staff and visitors. So we would have a public meeting and, you know, communicate that way. We always do direct mailers for these construction projects ahead of the construction, so if people aren't available to make it to the meeting, they get something, you know, that comes in the U.S. mail right to them with project details, and then with contacts if they have further questions. On Rutland Avenue, it's really just OCC is the only property there that's occupied right now. So we would, we're actually already talking about reaching out to them to set up a preliminary meeting for some of the design elements that we're considering right now. And we want to make sure that we coordinate with them and figure out what's the preferred way to keep their access during construction.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Counsel, any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I believe that we approved the set agenda items, A, authorization to purchase vehicles for the police department; B, acceptance of the M D C grant for road repairs; C, authorization to purchase Evergreen heat confection lights and the air treatment systems for new ambulances; and then D, authorization to upfit vehicles for the fire prevention.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haines, to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, that she just mentioned. And as in our packet, any other questions or comments from our council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Counsel. All right, next we move on to agenda items for discussion and/or action. And Mr. Crowe, I believe these are.
Yes, the next six items are all planning-related items, and it's for discussion purposes only. Our first item is 23675 Greenfield Road, currently the Cornerstone Plaza. And this is a proposal for facade improvements. This is, there are three potential tenants that are willing to back into the former Kroger shopping center space. And in order to get the tenants to agree to sign in, they're looking for some facade improvements. Now, this is something that I could do administratively if there's no waivers required, but since there was a particular colonial style that was established years ago, I wanted the developers to come and talk about what's going on, why they need to change, and then give the council a little, some images to look at on how they're going to do the backfill. I will say that the plaza is separated into three main building components. This is actually a separate building. The main entrance that terminates on the clock tower will be preserved as the colonial example. The buildings on the right and to the left, which is the Fifth Third Bank that was added on within the last decade, they balance the two ends of the building. So if this was going to take a facade renovation, this would be the building that would have the least impact on the overall development. And with that, I know Mr. Nager's here, and I believe some of his team. So if you want to come up and talk about the need, maybe mention that Kroger's has been gone for a while. I believe there's some other tenants that you've lost, and without an anchor, it's been more challenging to backfill. If you could give a little, introduce yourselves and give a little background, please.
Can you just also give your name and address? Can you just also give your, your name and address for the record?
Fred Nager, 4855 Tully Road, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. We originally built the center in 2001.
Can you speak up?
We originally put a supermarket there, which after a few months, we converted it to a Kroger supermarket. A long story, but Kroger was there for 20 years. They were a great tenant, but in the interim, a few years before their lease expired, they wanted a larger space. They wanted another like 50,000 or 60,000 square feet more. And we attempted with the city to try to expand it and give them that space. They wanted a gas station, a pharmacy, drive-through for some, something. And we were not able to provide it. And so naturally, what happened, they went to Oak Park, just north of there, and located there in a 115,000 square foot unit with a gas station. In the meantime, it's been empty for about, I'd say about a year and a half or two years. So in the interim, we found tenants now that would reoccupy it. But we need to renovate it, you know, to their footprint. So that's why we're here, to propose. I have the builder here and our real estate people, if you want any, ask any questions.
If you have anything you want to, you want to add before we ask questions from the council?
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Richie Atto, A-T-T-O, and my address is 2150 Franklin. That's in Bloomfield Township. I actually stood right here at the same spot, I think the podium might be upgraded, 28 years ago, to request a rezoning for the same property. And I want to say Sid Lance might have been the president at the time. I don't know what, whatever, if he's still with us or not. So we did rezon the property way back in the 90s, and the center's been built, and it's been successful until Kroger moved out. It's been more like three years since they've gone out. And it just needs a little bit of upgrading because the new tenants want more prototypical backgrounds for their signs. Unfortunately, the leases are not signed yet, and we, they're not able to disclose. But they fit the zoning classification, and there shouldn't be any waivers whatsoever. That's our intent. But we just wanted the honorable counsel to know what we have in mind and what's coming, and hopefully, it's going to be positive because we want to maintain the integrity of the center, but yet accommodate new tenants. And we think this is a suitable plan, and we wanted to bring it to your attention so that everybody in the council is aware of it. It's just been a long time vacant, and it's time to bring new life into the city, as we always try to do. Thank you for your time.
And if I could, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Fred, but the drugstore moved out. You had Panera Bread moved out. So the lack of an anchor is really hurting all the inline stores, too. And we're, we've tried some special land use and rezoning to try to attract other tenants. But this is the most plausible development that we've had in recent years, about getting some, some good tenants in there.
And unfortunately, within the last, maybe even weeks, CVS closed their store and moved out. So we need to keep, stop the exodus and bring new people. And hopefully, those larger tenants will attract folks to take over the vacancies that we've experienced, as Terry said, due to the lack of an anchor tenant.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions about this item? This will not be coming back to us. This can be done administratively through planning, but they wanted to see if the council had any additional input, and also in case there's questions when you see some work going on.
And I just want to clarify, it won't come back unless there's a waiver required. And without having detailed plans yet, we can't tell. But it's unlikely that it'll come back. But I didn't want somebody to be driving down Greenfield and see all this renovation, and you say, what's going on?
Counselwoman Hoag?
I just wanted to state that I'm looking forward to the revitalization of that plaza. I know when Kroger left as a resident, I felt that that Kroger was in much better condition than the one that is open today on 12 Mile. I was very shocked that they closed that particular location. So I wish you all the best, and I'm looking forward to bringing that back to life again.
Thank you very much. We were actually shocked, too, because they approached as if they wanted a renewal. And then they predicated that on a shorter term, as if they wanted, they had other plans, and at the last minute, went away.
Okay, well, looking forward to it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, counsel, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much. And I, I know our DDA director's here, so she's also going to try to find some ways to fill up that center as well, so.
And as always, I thank the council, but I also want to thank Terry because he's always been there to try to help and lend what's best for the city with, which is what's best for the residents and sometimes the property owners. So we thank Terry as well. Thank you, Terry.
Okay, thank you. The next is a presentation and discussion regarding a new Panda Express drive-through on Telegraph.
Thank you, Council President. This is a parcel at 29201 Telegraph Road. This is an out parcel. And over the last several years, we have looked at trying to backfill large office buildings that were developed in the 60s and 70s with an overabundance of parking, create more density, increase property values, and to provide more services to the office clientele that are located on site as well as other residents and people passing through. A couple of years ago, we looked at the site just to the north and developed an out parcel for Starbucks drive-through. This, I'm happy to say, is a Panda Express home, which is a new prototype. I believe there's only been five developed in the country. This will be the first one in Michigan, southeast Michigan. And I, I'm hoping somebody's here from Panda Express, but I'll just give you a quick overview. This is going to require rezoning because it's currently ERO, Education Research Office, to be three for construction of 2,400 square foot drive-through restaurant and an outlot between the office building and Telegraph Road. The hours of operation are proposed 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. The current zoning is ERO, proposed is B3. It's consistent with the future land use plan. These are the permitted and special land uses in the ERO. Now, they're proposing to do this as a conditional zoning. So all of the uses that are struck out in red, they're eliminating on their consent so that once this gets rezoned, these uses in red cannot be developed there. There is also some limitations based on setbacks from residential and so forth, but they've agreed to pare down. And specifically, as highlighted in green, is, they're looking for is a restaurant with drive-through with other services. Existing site has an egress on the south part of property to Telegraph Road. They're going to close this off. So all of the, the main ingress and egress will be at the main development. They're closing the secondary one, which will help with the flow of traffic on Telegraph Road. This is the Popeyes to the south. Existing conditions, it's currently a parking lot with a little bit of a green belt buffer. As part of this plan, they're looking at beautifying some extensive landscaping, streetscape elements along Telegraph, closing off this egress lane. There's a secondary ingress/egress that runs down to 12 Mile on the back portion of the property. Existing floor plan, and this is part of the new concept, has more of a Chinese architectural flair to it than the standard Panda Express. And at this time, I'm going to let the petitioners introduce themselves and give any other background that I've failed to mention, and I would be happy to answer your questions.
Now, thank you very much. My name is Eric Abelin with Heights Venture Architects, 3333 Warrenville Road, Suite 200, Lisle, Illinois, representing Panda Express. I'm here with Lainey Cowden, project manager, and Adam Stower, property owner of the office tower and the overall property. I want to first introduce Panda Express. Back in 1973, Andrew Chern and his father started the first Panda Inn restaurant in Pasadena, California. About 10 years later, they came up with the Panda Express model. And along with his wife Peggy, they honed the process and operations of the Panda Express. And, you know, some decades later, they've grown this restaurant chain and really the Panda Restaurant Group into what it is today. It is still owned by Andrew and Peggy Chern and their daughters. So it's a family-owned business, and they don't franchise out in the respect of just selling off their properties. It is still owned and operated by them. And Andrew reviews every site plan, every project that comes across his desk that they develop. So he's still very much involved in the process. If we get the chance to develop here in Southfield, this will be the first Panda Home in the southeast Michigan region. There is one that is open and operating in Howell, Michigan, and Lansing will open up later this year. Revenue is expected to be about $3 million in sales. We're expecting about 30 to 40 jobs. We do try to hire as local as possible. That just makes a lot of sense for everybody in the community. It's about seven to 10 per shift. Construction jobs, we have about a six-month build-out. And so you have a wide range of carpenters, electricians, plumbers, tile setters, HVAC, everything that goes in to really building this restaurant, does about six months of jobs there. Our operations, as he said, are 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., seven days a week. We do not serve alcohol, and we do not intend on serving any breakfast. The Panda Home style is, is really a concept they've worked on for a couple of years to develop the exterior and the interior, to really separate themselves from what a standard QSR, quick-service restaurant, would be, to really be a fast casual type of restaurant. It uses, on the exterior, traditional Chinese architecture. The wood, the colors of black and white, and the red are all representative of different concepts in Chinese culture. The door, over the door, we have what's called a moon gate. You'll typically find this as an entrance to a Chinese garden. And so this is our welcoming agent into the building. The wood elements, which is a fiber-on material, good 20-year lifespan, these are our portals of interaction. This is where guests interact with the building. That warmth of the wood on the exterior is drawn into the interior, and that brings in highly-developed and a higher-class interior of wood tabletops, oak and walnut. Like I said, they're, they're family business, and they call this the Panda Home. They would like you to enjoy dinner at their home, but better yet, you can enjoy it at your home as well. They really want to bring back people around the table, bring back people having dinner at the table and having a family event. Back to the site, you know, part of the building orientation was really important to us to make sure that the drive-through traffic was not going to be impacting Telegraph. We know that there might be some issues with some other adjacent properties. And cutting off that exit to our south of the site is going to really help improve traffic flow along Telegraph. Queuing on the interior of the site holds about 13 cars. But if there is any backup, that's all internal to that Panda lot. And as stated, traffic will come in through the north. We've provided wayfinding signs for exiting traffic, Panda customers, so that they yield to the existing office traffic, to the Starbucks traffic. And we're expecting that to manage that flow a lot better, since we're creating a little intersection there on the interior of the site. The office has really done a good job of redeveloping the north side of the office building. They've added Port Cocheur, really built out the ADA parking there. So guests to the office building are drawn to that entrance. So the removal of this parking lot will have a much less impact because they've already got the infrastructure in place to direct the office members and the traffic to the appropriate entrance on the north. Thank you for the opportunity to present ourselves, and we look forward to any questions.
I just want to also mention, this is the third project at the site. About a decade ago, the office building was very underperforming, had a lot of vacancies. There was a lot of issues with circulation. And we worked with the owner on redeveloping a circulation plan, a wayfinding plan, a drop-off. Then we incorporated the Starbucks. As now, this is the third project that's breathing new life into this site. And it just shows you that our parking requirements from the 70s, even when the office building was full, was, was way above and beyond the needs. So we're able to get higher density and better circulation, even with these out parcel developments.
Counselwoman Hoag?
Thank you. I support this project, so I'll say that first. So my comments are really directed to you, Mr. Crowe. And you mentioned it in your statements, and I'm sure you're aware of this, but sometimes the traffic that comes out of, like Popeyes specifically, it's a danger. Specifically on the weekends, in the evenings, the cars are coming out of, on, and, you know, they're in line while they're still on Telegraph. So yes, we do want to revitalize that, the buildings over there and all that. But somehow, if we can see what we could do of anything with that, because it just, it never eases up. It's been like that for years. And so I'm glad you're coming, but I just want to put it out there, just to state, something needs to be done because it gets very dangerous with people flying down Telegraph. And then if you're trying to, you know, go and head west on 12 Mile, or if you're turning into that plaza with the AT&T, I think it is, the store or the restaurant there, it just gets very congested and dangerous. So, but I do support this project, thank you.
I'll just comment that we have been working with MDOT every time we have development there. And that the fact that they're closing that southern egress drive will help with the stacking and some of the traffic there. I would say that the Popeyes, that took over in a former Wendy's, so that footprint was already there. And we learned our lessons as far as when Chick-fil-A came in, we kind of knew that we had to have a larger internal stacking. And we spent a lot of time because of what we've learned at Popeyes. If Popeyes was a brand-new built, we would have pushed back the stacking space a lot more than, than the issues that we have today. So we're cognizant of it, and every time we have development north of 12 Mile in this stretch, we work closely with MDOT.
Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
What, and that's, I know you indicated that these are not franchised. And we're, we're at the concentration in the United States that you might have a concentration of these restaurants?
They are, they are nationwide and in 11 different countries. It's really, they really focus on suburban areas and then work themselves into city centers. So for example, in Chicago, you'll have a lot of downtown tenant-type situations. But they do have a lot of freestanding stores as well. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say there's a real concentration because they are, they are really trying to spread out, if anything, probably west coast, because that's where they started, so they have the largest footprint. But they're, they're across the east coast as well as the Midwest.
Yeah, and in that getting into any proprietary information, what, what would be potential revenue for this store, the projected revenue for this location?
They expect to do about $3 million in sales annually. That's gross sales annually. I don't know what your tax rate is, so I couldn't, I couldn't do that math.
Okay. I go down that line of questioning because from a geopolitics standpoint, does America's relationship with China affect your sales, any, when you have these up and downs? That happens?
Not that I'm aware of.
Would it be a corporate issue, they would, do it?
If anything, it would be a corporate issue. Because I've worked with Panda Express for about 15 years, and during the pandemic, we paused for about three months, and then it was gas-forward. They, they did experience some negativity, cultural negativity during the beginning of the pandemic. But that really didn't, I don't think that really affected, you know, the, what Panda Express is, what they represent as far as their charitable contributions, and their stores on the ground, because, you know, they were just, they're, they're local people that. local people that are hired as well. So it's not that, it was just as if it was any business that was, that was suffering from, from that sort of adverse condition. So I've not witnessed any personally.
No, it's just a generic question, not generic, but it's a question. Can you say, how many employees you propose to have?
Probably 30 to, 30 to 40. Depends on how they run their shifts, but they typically will have seven to 10 employees per shift, and they'll run two shifts a day.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Mr. Crowe, just, I have a, just out of curiosity, because there was no building there before, how do you determine the address?
Well, Ms. Malali works with the post office to determine what the next sequence is for addressing.
So the, the post office determines the address?
They work with the city, so she works very closely with the post office. So when, this is part and parcel to the larger development, so it has the main address right now, but it'll, it'll be assigned its own, I believe it'll be assigned its own parcel number. And like I said, she works with them. We have a, I don't know, a tradition or policy that if there's a building torn down, the address gets removed from a vacant parcel, and we, we use the parcel ID number until something's built, and then it gets reassigned a number. And there's all a bunch of rules on where you are on the mile roads and what numbers those go in, and certain numbers are left open for assignment at a later time.
Okay.
And I will mention that this will come back in two weeks for a public hearing on your March 28 meeting.
March 24.
24th. Wait, whatever, isn't today the 4th? So it's three weeks.
25th.
On the 25th. Yeah, I got the planning commission dates in my head, too.
All right. Counsel, any other questions? All right, thank you. We look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next is a discussion regarding the proposal to add alcohol sales in a carryout restaurant to the Chelga Station on Greenfield and 10 Mile.
Again, for discussion purposes, consideration of a special land use and updated site plan for property located at 10 Mile and Greenfield. There is a current carryout restaurant that never got special land use approval there, and people talk very highly about the chicken that sells there. So we want to get them in conforming situation, and while we're doing that, they're also requested to take advantage of the beer, wine, and liquor sales. And we're also addressing a number of non-conforming or out-of-date site issues as part of this. Their proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 6 a.m. to midnight, Sunday, 7 a.m. to 10 p.m., but the alcohol sales are governed by what the state rules are. Again, we, we bring this map and make it available, just for your information, where beer, wine are allowed and where the sale of spirits throughout the city. Again, the specially-designated merchants license is for commercial stores, grocery stores, and gas stations to sell beer and wine only, and then the specially-designated distributors license, the SDD, is for spirits. And all, then there's a number of other categories, but this is for purchase and consumption off-site. The city currently has approximately 16 of the SDM or the beer and wine license available. We have a negative one of the off-premises spirits, but my understanding is the applicant already has purchased a liquor license, has been holding on, and then other on-premises, there are 51 allowed. There's two available for, for those types of licenses. The, around, surrounding the gas station, there is the Prince Fine Wine and Liquor located immediately across the street in the north shopping center, and there is no other, I believe, sales of beer and wine in the immediate vicinity. Existing zoning is B3 general business. It's consistent with the master plan of local mixed use. Again, the site aerial, these are some site photos, some of which were taken from Google Street, so you'll see an evolution of some of the facade changes that they've made on the site. I'll point out, this outside storage that was up here has been removed, and they'll be making some additional ADA accessibility improvements. They've improved the facade already, and you can see it's much cleaner up the front. And then their site plan will include a bike rack, pedestrian connectivity, screening of the grease dumpster, relocation of the ice chest to make it accessible, and some other cleanup of the site. Floor plan, where the beer and wine and liquor is proposed to be sold, elevations, and then I'd ask the petitioner to come up if they have any comments to add. This is some existing conditions. If you can introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Ken Moreland, 29895 Greenfield Road in Southfield. I'm with Dorchen Martin and Associates. We're the architects, working with the owner, Mr. Dave Youssef, who is here with me. As Mr. Crowe had indicated, the project, the site is, is in conformance with the zoning ordinance as far as setbacks and parking, accessibility. We will be providing accessible paths from the public sidewalks into the front entry. As far as the exterior facade goes, it will not require any modifications other than, at some point, if he decided to update his signage to indicate liquor and alcohol sales, that would go through the procedure with the sign permit and what the city requires for that. On the interior, there are no modifications required. It will simply be a reallocation of the storage or of the space displayed, as well as the cooler, reallocating, moving, whatever it is that they're going to place in those areas. And then the liquor will be behind the counter, which is secured for, with glass and everything. At that point, I guess I would open it up to any questions you might have.
If, if you want to weigh in, so there's an existing carryout restaurant, and it's had health department approval, but they never got special land use. So that's part and parcel to the approval you'll be considering.
I'm sorry. Apparently, in 2014, Mr. Youssef went through all the procedures, got a building permit, had all the inspections, did everything, except somehow there was a slip-up and never got special use back then, so.
All right. But I guess the chicken is still tasty, so. Counsel, do you have any questions? All right, I have, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I really am not in favor of this. I know we're not voting today, but it's so close to Prince's Liquor Store. I mean, it's literally right there. And I know we approved one already that was across the street, too, but they were only doing beer and wine. If we're doing alcohol, too, then that's not consistent with what we voted for on the previous one, in my mind. So I just have a bit of a concern. I don't see how this works. I don't even understand why we don't zone these permits or licenses out like we do zone out everything else, because, I mean, I understand it's, we want everybody to be profitable. We're not trying to say, I'm not trying to say that. I'm just simply saying that, you know, it may be just too much on one corner, but that's just my opinion. You know, we'll hear from you all in a couple of weeks and everything, so I'm just giving you just, just kind of what I feel about it right now.
Mr. Crowe, the one that we approved at 10 Mile and Southfield, that was, that was also liquor sales as well, wasn't that?
They, they already had, they already, I believe, had their liquor license as well. So they got approved for beer, wine, and liquor. And, and I'll just reiterate, because I think Mr. Cruz was not at that particular evening. So these type of off-premises consumption, if there was a liquor store next to a grocery store that sold beer, wine, and liquor, next to a convenience store that sold beer, wine, or liquor, there's no, the state does not require any separation. We only require this to be a special land use because the gas stations themselves, the carryout, and the intensity of the traffic in and out lend itself to us looking at traffic circulation, parking, and so forth. But if you took away the gas and this was just a C-store, they could get their beer, wine, and liquor license, and we would have no review other than if it was available in our quota based on our population. So, yes, we understand, I will say, at the public hearing, there was, the proponents of people spoke were in favor of this and said good things about the proprietor, how clean it is, and how good the chicken is, irrespective of the fact that liquor's being sold there. But this is also, and we've, we've looked at this at other gas stations, there's, there's different hours of operation, and there's a different specialty of liquor stores that you would go to for, if you're having a party or you want some high-end stuff. Their sales are generally more the consumer type. There's somebody already there. They're there late at night. They want to grab a six-pack or a bottle of cheaper wine or whatever, no disrespect to what they're selling. I'm not here to advocate one way or the other. I'm just trying to show the distinctions of, if this was just a C-store on the corner, they wouldn't even need to come in front of counsel to get approved. And I was telling my colleague today, Mr. Payson, of the three gas stations that we have reviewed for consideration of beer, wine, and liquor sales, I was pleasantly surprised that the support that the community had come out in saying that it was a safe location, that the proprietors were, were like family, they've known each other, that places were kept clean, and we don't often get that with other, other retailers and other types of services. So at least, at least that bodes well for the type of operators they are. Irregardless of how you want to vote and whether you want to vote in favor or not, I've been at least pleasantly surprised of the three that we've reviewed, how positive most of the comments are. And I understand competition's competition, and, and nobody likes any, any additional competition, but I think they're almost a different point of sales and different type of product that are being offered.
Yeah, I understand that, because we've talked about that with gas stations. Got to go to a new model, you know, because things aren't like they used to be. So I totally get it, and I get my gas there. I live right down the street. So it's not, it's nothing against the station or anything. I just, just wanted to throw that out, but like you said, what the point you just made again kind of reminded me why I did end up voting for the last one, and that's, and that was part of the reason why. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Counsel, Monbrywell?
To Mr. Crowe, can you explain what a vote no would mean when we make votes?
What a no vote would mean?
Yes.
Well, it would take the majority of the councils to vote no for them to not be approved for the sale of beer, wine, and liquor. And since this also includes the takeout sales, I would, if, if that ever came to a decision where one was voted up or down, I would ask for separate votes so that they could at least continue their carryout. And then I'll defer to the city attorney. There, I mean, there are some subjective standards under special land use, but I think that if, if the council, the proponents of council was to vote something down, we would need to have some substantial findings of fact, why, and it would probably would prohibit them from coming back for the same thing for at least a year.
And would not be, well, basically, what we're doing is returning away a business that has basically followed the rules, the guidelines that were set, and that's just like we would do any other business that would come here.
Yeah, and I want to make the distinction between a site plan that's meeting all the checks and boxes. You, as counsel, with special land use, there are more subjective criteria that you have to review, like negative impact, or traffic circulation, or traffic impact studies, hours of operation noise. That's why with every special annuals, you'll know that we make sure that the hours of operation are pinned down, because you might be in favor of a particular use, but you don't want it going to 2:00 in the morning or because of neighbors' impacts. So that's another reason the special land use is treated differently, and the state gives you the legislative authority to approve special land uses. And it's because of a combination of, most, most of the gas stations are on corners. They have other requirements as far as setback and ingress egress that we created this special land use category for these types of sales. Again, if this was a standalone, let's say, 7-Eleven that did not have a gas pump, they could just get their permit, and you would never even see it other than if the clerk brought it to your attention.
Just a question?
Yeah, I wanted to just continue what you were saying. So a lot of this is for convenience, because when you're talking about a facility that has some of the same things there, when a person goes into a gas station, they're going in to get gas, and for whatever reason, the other convenience is, just like you would with anything else. So it's not really necessarily, to me, a conflict more than it is a preference to where you would like to go in the sense of, if that's what you're buying, if that's what you're purchasing, you're going in that particular place for it. Again, I stress the word convenience because, to me, whether it was hamburgers or whatever, if you're right there at that place, you wouldn't want to go across the street or somewhere else. And I think that's kind of important, and we need to look at that when we're talking about businesses, because we're sort of narrowing ourselves into different things when we're talking about, I don't want to say any emotional part of it, but we really need to look at how we are supporting businesses and how we're allowing these people to come here to do things that are helping us or not helping them and helping us as well, supplying a need for people that would rather those products or what have you.
Yeah, I think one of the public that spoke says, "I shop at the liquor store when I want certain high-end things. If I'm at the gas station, I want to grab a six-pack. It's convenience." And I know I go to a particular gas station for the coffee only, because their house blend is better than, in my opinion, Starbucks or anything else, and it's more affordable. And that's why I, I go to that gas station, because of the coffee.
Thank you.
Counsel, Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, now, we had three of these requests that have come through the clerk's office now. Is that, is that right? And we've already approved one. This would be two?
This would be the third one.
Oh, this would be the third?
If it gets approved.
Okay. Then I just want to say again, I would like to have a moratorium on this for about a year before we approve anymore, if that's possible. And if the council would agree with me with that. Do I have to answer now? I'm just saying. I just want to put it out there. I think we should just chill for a minute. We did the same thing with the adult-use cannabis. I think we can do the same thing here.
I just don't know how many. I think there may be one or two more that are currently going through the process, but that's, that's a discussion for another time.
What we can do is do a little research. We're coming back in two weeks for a discussion item, and maybe we could give you some updates. I just, and I would, I would like to talk to the attorney because it's just got approved, like, in October, November last year. And there's no, there's nothing wrong with putting a pause on, but I'd like to do a little more background on how many we have, what we expect to get, and bring that to you before you make a final determination. We can always put a moratorium in place.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I would just caution that we need to be consistent, especially if the licenses are available, that to single, to say yes to this one and this one, and no, not to another, I think you're opening yourself up to a possible lawsuit. Secondly, and I've said this all along about this, and the petitioner here is, is doing what, you know, from the outset, when we agreed that we would allow beer and wine or liquor sales at gas stations, I maintained all along that then they need to clean up their appearances. And this is our, this is our wedge for that, and the gentleman before you are obviously very willing to do that. You know, some- You know, some of our corners are very tired, and have not been kept up, and a number of them, I'm sorry to say, are gas stations. So, you know, if I were voting on this, I would vote to approve it out of consistency and the fact that they're cleaning up another corner in the city of Southfield. Thank you.
Mr. Crowe, the question I had, maybe petitioner can answer this too, the parking spaces on the south side of the building, from the pumps that are next to the building next door, are those owned by the gas station, or are they owned by the building next door?
By the gas station.
Okay, because they have signs that say, "Parking for the cleaners only."
The sign, I just asked for their approval to post the signs on their wall, on their building, just so all the Crispy and Crunchy customers can park over there. So, they allowed me to post the signs on their wall. So, that building is the neighbor's building, and I just asked for permission if I can post my signs on there, and they said okay.
But do those signs say that their parking is, like, for the cleaners?
For the crusty chicken.
For the crispy.
Crispy chicken.
Okay, so that's, okay, that's what I'm getting confused.
That's what the sign says.
Okay.
Crispy and crunchy chicken customers can park there.
Okay.
Rather than parking at the pump, or parking in front of the store, they can just park there, and go grab their chicken and leave.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, just like Mr. Cruz, I'm also, I'm closer than him to this, and I'm there quite often.
Okay.
But I never understood, I was, I'm like, I never understood the whole chicken sign, but now I guess, I don't buy the chicken at the gas station.
I posted it just for that reason, so.
Okay.
I will say, we double-check the parking, they have 20 required, 20 are provided, including the pumps, and I will say, we know that during rush hour, it's a very popular place, so just like any other place, sometimes people are pulling in and pulling out, not parking exactly in the space, but I think that's a self-regulating item, because if they're completely full, people will choose to come back at another time or not at all. But they do meet their parking requirements with this new configuration.
Okay. Council, any other questions?
Yes. Do you have a plan in place for your beautification, for your landscaping and design?
It's in the plan.
It's in the plan?
Yeah.
Because I like to stress that the mirrors, that is very important. I know when we go to other cities and see there are gas stations that are sitting on the corner, the beautification is so important, and the consistency is very important, too. So, I think that if that is well-kept consistently, it would be really
Absolutely.
...a great asset to our city and to those corners.
Absolutely. We want to see it just as beautiful as you want to see it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes?
Obviously, I've been supportive of this since the idea came up about doing it, and I spoke to the chief, the police chief, when it first came up a year ago. I think the mayor brought up a good point, I think this has added to the promising aspect of this, and you have an industry that's changing, and you obviously got to get on board with what we call the changes in the industry. And if we have a vehicle that will pressure you to enhance your location, in order to maintain the sight appeal of it, I think that goes along, in addition to the fact that your industry is changing, and we are supportive of the businesses in the city, and so that just adds another, well, another reason that I'm supporting this. So, I just wanted to, I'm glad the mayor brought it up, it's kind of like an obvious thing, but it's something that just wasn't top of mind, so, okay, thank you.
Councilman Hicks?
I just ask, when we have our next committee of the whole meeting, I'd like to have a better understanding from planning, from the council's perspective, on what the entire vision of the city will be. I know that when my parents moved me out here, they wanted to move me away from liquor stores on every corner. I just ask that we have some discussion as to what the vision and the goal of the aesthetics of the city going forward.
Any other comments? All right, we'll see you back in a few weeks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Terry.
And to Mr. Hicks's last comment, we are working on doing a joint meeting with the planning commission, we're just trying to figure out a date between all the different meetings that we have going on, so we are going to do a joint meeting with the planning commission.
And the other thing I'll say in short, Mr. Hicks, Councilman Hicks, is that the city adopted their comprehensive master plan last year, which looks at the immediate five years, but looks long-term, and we take our guidance on that master plan. So, future land use decisions, as well as special projects, and our implementation strategy, we try to follow that as closely as possible, and that's why we give you the annual reports, it's basically, this is how we're doing on implementing our plan. One of the major tenants of that plan was our sustainability, a master plan and climate action program. So, I'll do the best I can to do a synopsis for you, we might ask to come back and give you more full report. The retreats that are scheduled also are an opportunity to spend more time with that, and we've had in the past some council retreats where we did visioning and brainstorming to guide us on what your priorities are as a council. So, there are a lot of tools that are already in place, that have been adopted by council, and we follow those until there's a change. So, I don't know if there's, I can tell you specifically if there's a plan on having X number of gas stations, or X number of car washes, but we do look at where the zoning is, and we've made many modifications. For example, the residential unit development district was in response to the school district, closing a number of schools and having this excess property. We're a built-out community, and we said, "This is a great partnership to look at redevelopment and reuse of the older schools, and to create some higher-density residential on these large tracts of vacant land." So, that was in a direct response to the needs of the school district, as well as looking at our long-term growth as a community. And I'm afraid that that's going to take more time to prepare for it than in two weeks, but we'll try to give you a synopsis.
All right. Our next item is a presentation and discussion regarding a proposal to renovate and reuse a vacant former church at Lasser Road.
Yes, so, through the chair, again, in three weeks, special land use site plan for the Philippine American Cultural Center of Michigan. It's a former church site at 23800 Lasser Road, that's been vacant, and either never received its original approval, or its nonconformity has lapsed. Existing zoning R1 residential, they want to reoccupy the former church as a religious institution and cultural center. The church was originally built in 1963, and then they added classroom additions in 1973. They're proposing hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. The site is zoned R1, low-density multifamily, so it's consistent with the future land use plan, existing site. And they have recently replaced the roof, you can see from the lower picture, some patches on the roof. That is actually the parking lot, which a lot of grass has grown through, it's in pretty bad shape, and it's part of their occupation of the facility. They're going to be redoing the parking lot, they've already invested in the roof, and they've got other plans for site improvements. North elevation, south elevation, the rectory is going to be improved, there's a caretaker's house that may come down, or will be renovated, and there's a shed up here that will be removed. Based on maximum use of the fellowship hall, the church facility, and the classrooms, they need approximately 48 additional parking spaces for long-term. We are proposing to reduce impervious surface, and because we think it's going to be very rare that they're going to be fully occupied, but ordinance allows for land banking. So, they're going to repair the existing hundred space parking lot, re-stripe it, repave it, help with circulation, a new drive to the rectory, and then we've got an area proposed for future land banking development of 48 additional spaces if it's needed in the future. Existing floor plan, they have the fellowship hall in the basement, the church hall with, on the upper level, with pews, and then classrooms, and a library and office space. So, with that, ask the architect and the petitioner to come up and fill in any other additional background that I failed to mention, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Can you just give your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, my name's Arthur Collagen, architect at 1871 Austin Drive, Troy, Michigan. Been practicing architecture there for about 40 years, and I specialize in a lot of church architecture. This particular project is an existing church that's still going to, even though it's called a cultural center, it would be a church as well, as well as cultural activities. They do have special dance cultural performances throughout the year as well, and they plan on doing that in the facility. Our primary goal was to try to bring back and reuse the building, and beautify it within practical reasons. Initially, there is no addition that's planned, but there's an addition theoretically proposed against the rectory on the north end of the existing residence, and that would be for the spaces lost by tearing down the two storage structure and the other house, and that would house whatever storage equipment they might have, like lawn mowers, and probably use as a multipurpose space, extra ancillary space from the Lasser, the other two outbuildings, which would help beautify the site, and keep it away from the residence, and tie it into the existing structure that's there, which is covered by a large amount of trees to the east, so it wouldn't hardly be noticed. And our goal was to put landscaping along the parking areas to shield it from the adjacent neighbors, and that's what you see shown, designated in color. Pretty much the pavements will be redone to the existing facility, and we didn't plan on expanding the parking lot, because right now, we anticipate about a 300 people occupant load to this church, but in the event that it discloses, there's enough site on there to expand the parking lot, and show it as a land bank presently, but what we're doing is really fixing up the existing building as-is, adding some new lighting, and landscaping, and resurfacing the parking lot, and fixing the rectory as well, that is in need of repair. The other two buildings are sadly in disrepair, to be really spent money needlessly on a building that's in bad shape, so we're thinking it'd be more pleasing as well to add addition to the existing rectory. So, essentially, it'll remain as a church, and bring it back to the beauty that it had at one time, you know, within practical reasons. And the operation will be, I think it'll be occupied every day, so I think it'll be a safety feature instead of a vacant land there, the church will be primarily used Wednesdays and Sundays, but during the weekday, there'll be other activities that are low intensity. The president of the organization's here, she might want to greet you too, and explain anything in detail as well.
Good evening, my name is Becky Tongol, and I'm the president of Philippine American Community, usually Community Center of Michigan. We were on North Land Park Court for 22 years, now we have an opportunity to expand when we sold that 23800 on Lasser, which is an old church. We really want to have our own church, and also the classroom for the kids, that we teach them our culture on weekends, particularly on Sundays. That's all about it. I hope, you know, we get this permit to restore the building. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Councilman Brightwell?
You indicated that there was, would it be a portionate on this property?
Yes, that's for the minister, that would stay in that house and the rectory.
Okay. Dear, does that fall under this zoning that we have currently here?
Yes, it's residential, but it needs a special land use if it's a religious institution, and religious institutions allow for rectories and people to live.
Right.
So, that's, and again, either their nonconformity ceased to exist because it's been vacant for over a year, or they never got their special land use, I don't recall. The church has been there since, I think, the 60s, but they never got its formal approval. So, now that they're reoccupying it, we're trying to bring it up to standards.
Okay. All right, I just, no, I heard you said something about some housekeeper or, well, anyway, it brought the fact that, now, what would be your estimated dollar value of the renovation here?
Well, the renovations continue right now, the majority of it was the roof repair, which is pretty much being completed now, and the next thing during the spring would be the pavement area, which is a major part of the cost. Right now, the church is cleaning up the debris from the inside, and pretty much nothing new is being built on the inside, other than fixing whatever is damaged from the water damage they had.
Okay. So, are we looking at 500,000, or a million, or 50,000? What's the estimated value?
No, I would say what is about 300,000.
Excuse me, I don't, Councilman Brightwell, I don't know if we could be asking those questions to the petitioner. I'll defer to the city attorney, but I don't believe we can ask them what the value of their renovations or anything else is, based on their...
It's in the site plan report, if the site plan ever seen.
Through the chair, when they pull a permit, they have to give a value of the cost of renovations, and then we use that value to determine if the art requirement is triggered. Now, in this particular case, it's not, as far as I know, but that stuff is going to be subject to when they pull a permit.
Okay, okay, to be determined. Okay.
Some of it's ongoing right now, but the majority of it will be to be determined, yeah.
Okay.
Parking lot's going to be a major expense.
Okay, all right. If once, do you have a timeframe, once you start and to finish? Estimate your timeframe?
Would you finish everything within six months?
We hope to finish it probably within six months, but I think, you know, maybe next year.
Money, like, being a church, it's going to be based on how much people give to, so it's a little harder to, but they would like to have it within six months to a year completed.
We actually, yes, we are in a hurry, because right now, we're just renting for the school on a Sunday, we're just renting a small, at the World Medical Relief, if you're familiar with that, they rented us a space on Sunday for the children to learn. So, we're really trying hard so that we could have this done at least probably six months or more.
Okay, I feel good.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I've had the occasion on any number of times to attend programs at the Philippine American Center on North Park Drive. This is a great improvement for you, that space was limited, it's now occupied by, matter of fact, a few months ago, I went there for the Nigerians have taken your space. So, again, this is part of our rich cultural diversity in the city. You may know that our Korean Cultural Center has just gone under some major renovations, and along with our whole litany of ethnic-based churches. So, I would, when I heard this, that you had moved?
Yes.
Because I met with the Nigerians in your space, and the work that they've done to... your space, and the work that they've done to improve that facility, so I congratulate you on wanting to grow and add more support to the Philippine community. And obviously, Southfield's the center of it all, so there's a reason why our community is picked for many of these centers, so, and I'm always glad to see a vacant building get love and new tenants, so, thank you.
We're hoping to have.
All right, yeah, and I'm always glad when we have petitioners who want to come in and rehab and take over older buildings and bring them up to code and reuse them, so that's always adaptive reuse that we're always touting in Southfield. So if there's no further questions from counsel, we will see you back in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next is a presentation and discussion regarding the proposal to renovate and reuse a vacant tenant space for a commercial, in a commercial center on Southfield Road for a new restaurant and bar.
Yes, through the chair, the address is two five zero eight zero Southfield Road and its existing shopping center. Special annual request to allow for renovation or reuse of a vacant restaurant and bar lounge. This was the former Paradise Lounge that they got operated, never got their health department liquor license, and they've been shut down for quite some time. They're proposing an upscale lounge, restaurant and bar, hours of operation seven days a week from eleven AM to two PM. The proprietors are, the current owners proprietors of Debo's, so they got a good track record here within the city, and I believe they own and operate District Seventy-Eight in downtown Detroit. The site actually is two parcels. They're going to be located in the basement of the northern parcel, which has B three adjacent to Southfield Road and vehicular parking to the rear. It is consistent with the future land use plan. The site was previously approved when the shopping center went through some renovations, but they're here tonight for special land use approval, so this would be the front and back of the ground floor. They'll be actually located in the basement. There's four means of ingress egress, and here's a layout of existing tenants on the ground floor with the basement, and this is their proposed layout of, for the lounge floor area. With that, gentlemen, if you want to introduce yourself, what your concept is, and talk a little bit about the floor plan for counsel?
Samuel Kirkland, two three two two one Argyle Street, Novi, Michigan. Our concept is called Bloom, and it's a vibrant concept where we're going to serve small plates and provide entertainment for the older crowd, you know. The young crowd kind of took over Debo's, so we're looking to do something more for people our age. There'll be dancing, more healthy food, and a lot of networking going on there.
Counsel, do you have any questions or anything you want to ask?
I'll just say, I would support this project because that's a known spot for ballrooming, and so it'd be helpful to bring it back, and just experience knows that once you open the previous, people that partake in that dancing, and they will be back, so I'm looking forward to you opening this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes, Councilor, please?
I agree too. I look forward to seeing it open. I've been going there off and on for years. It's always, it's been a little rowdy the last couple of years, but I like the concept of that. Now, you've got a lot of stairs there, so if you're catering to old folks, you better make sure you've got some, something to hold on to when we get down there. But you say you're just doing small plates. No, we're not doing the big meals and everything, just kind of snacking and, you know, alcohol, I'm assuming, and stuff like that. The only thing I just remembered, and I'm sure this is going to be taken care of in this, because didn't we have someone trying to open up before, Terry, and we had issues with the kitchen and the hoods and stuff and...
Well, as I mentioned, Paradise, I think it was the Paradise Lounge, went in there, but they never got their health approval, they never got their liquor license. There are some other challenges, and certainly these gentlemen will have to go through our building department.
Yeah.
And I, excuse me, I had to step out for a minute, but besides the four stairwells, there also is an elevator that provides access to the basement. I don't know if that got mentioned, but...
As long as you drink too much, you can take the elevator out.
I didn't need the elevator before. I need it now. So, all right, well, great. Yeah, I look forward to seeing you guys get that moving.
Counsel, hands.
You said, small plates, are you going to be doing cooking there? Is there a commercial kitchen, or are you going to bring food out, or...
There's a commercial kitchen. Small plates, lamb chops, Brussels sprouts, shrimp.
Will you be open for lunch, or just as a dinner crowd, or...
We are going to be open for lunch.
Lunch, dinner, brunch on the weekends as well.
So you're basically marketing to, like, the old-school crowd, if you were, is that what my understanding is, or someone different?
Yes.
Did you mention ballroom dancing?
Ballroom dancing.
What, now I have a question. What's considered the old-school crowd? I'm trying to figure out if I fall into that category.
Thirty-five enough.
If you have to ask, you don't know.
Can you ballroom dance is the question.
Yes. Again, you may.
Were you around for the comfort zone on...
I'm familiar with the comfort zone.
Doc Mosley was my brother, so you know I know.
Mr. Crowde, what is, we also see that it's, besides a special land use, there's some waivers, and then there's some things that have to go to the ZBA?
Yes, it's an existing building, and this type of facility needs a front yard setback of X amount of feet, and this building is fortunately built right at the right-of-way line. So it's an existing nonconformity, but whereas the building itself, when it got the addition, they got a waiver for that particular setback. Since the original lounge went in, the special land use was created with a different setback requirement, so they have to go to the ZBA to get that waiver. But because of the existing conditions and the irregular shape of the property and so forth, those are legitimate reasons to grant the waiver. The front parking is actually in the road commission of Oakland County's right-of-way, and they've, that's existed there, that's been an issue that keeps being brought up. Should they ever widen the road, those spaces in front would go away, but they have plenty of space in the back to accommodate this particular use.
All right, and then what's the waiver for the screening wall?
Well, again, this type of use requires a screening wall between there and the residence, and in many cases, counsel has the prerogative of approving a fence or other landscape substitution as opposed to requiring the wall.
Isn't there already a wall there?
There's, there's, there's something missing in the gap on the north side of the property, and we're just checking all the boxes.
Okay.
And again, we're trying to bring the site into conformance.
All right, Councilman Brightwell?
I remember this property. Years ago, when I was much younger, I frequented there often. So what are you going to do to be successful that where the individuals in the past failed?
Now, how you defining success? You talking...
I mean, you had to define success. I mean, it's your business, so you define what is successful to you.
Well, we're definitely going to market. We're going to use social media, and we're going to cater to the older people. You know, the first person I'm taking dancing is my mother, you know? She works at Debo's as a host. She has a nice crowd. She'll pack it for us.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, Councilman Hands?
You talked about old school. I think what's important here is when you're bringing something like that here, there are people that are old-school style, want to be able to go somewhere where it's safe, where it's enjoyable, where they can dance, and it's decent. So I know you were gonna, are going to remember that when you do things, but that's just the main thing. Old school, we're not the crowd that, you know, jumps and runs and do all of these crazy kind of things. Adults are looking for a place like that, and we expect something to be of caliber, and we're looking forward to seeing that, you know, with the secured parking or security inside, and we welcome those type of things for old school.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor?
Just a couple of fun facts about your location. It was one of, I think it was Southfield's first grocery store. It was called Food Lanes, and it was built when Southfield Road was two lanes, so it's not a surprise that there's virtually no parking in the front of, in front of the building.
That's old school.
And the other fun fact was, before we had a forty-six district court, it was, the restaurant was the courthouse for Southfield Township. So maybe incorporate some of that in your old-school...
One more fun fact. I grew up right around the corner on Lathrop.
Okay.
I'm back to the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, you was right, you was right there.
Well, I'm excited about, you know, you guys, I was at your opening at Debo's. You had a smash hit there. I was over the other night, and there's no place to park, which is a good thing, you're busy, so I'm sure this will take off as well.
I think they said you dined and danced too, didn't you? Was that you? We got you on camera.
Are you going to have ballroom dancing lessons for those who don't know how?
Absolutely.
All right.
Send him a ticket.
So through the chair, just wanted to point out, I brought up the area. Many people don't realize that Hilton Drive continues up partially, so that's actually part of the city right-of-way. That's where this wall requirement, and there's also a requirement that direct access to a major thoroughfare. So this is like a practical difficulty based on the shape of the lot. It doesn't technically meet the ordinance requirements. So counsel can waive the screening wall requirement, which is really a mute point when the restaurant's going to be downstairs, and then because of the irregular shape of the lot and Hilton Drive, the setback from the right-of-way, again, here is the right-of-way right at the front of the building, and that's supposed to be sixty feet, and then the ingress egress. So that's why those waivers would be required.
Okay.
And Terry, when you come out on that exit, you can only go to Southfield Road. It doesn't go residential, does it?
Well, you could turn right. I'm not sure if that's a gated community.
No, you can cut through.
Yeah, so you could cut through.
Yeah.
I forget the name of this street, but, and there's also two exits onto Ten Mile. You could come straight down and exit Ten Mile at two locations, so I don't know why someone would go through this way if they could exit here and here. So there's three means of ingress egress to this parking area currently. It's just this, this actually has a separate parcel number, so we, we're treating it, because the lounge is downstairs on the northern part of the building, we have to look at the requirements for this part of the property.
Yeah, it's, it's not a gated community. It's, there are signs that say it's a private drive, but unfortunately, it's not always followed, so. All right, counsel, anything else? All right, well, we will see you back in a couple of weeks.
Okay, one more thing. Go Blue.
All right, the, our last item for discussion and our action is a presentation and discussion regarding the proposal to construct a new car wash on Telegraph and Nine Mile.
So this is a former bank site located at two three zero five five Telegraph Road. It is an L-shaped parcel that has access directly onto Telegraph Road, and there's a secondary means of ingress egress to Nine Mile, West Nine Mile Road. Its current zoning is I one industrial along the frontage of Telegraph, and then there's a fifty-foot buffer strip of vehicular parking that was probably put in place years ago to protect the neighborhoods from any future development. The proposed zoning is to go to B three general business and to keep the vehicular parking buffer. They're going to do a complete tear-down of the existing bank facility and build new car wash, propose hours of operation Monday through Friday, seven AM to seven PM, Saturday and Sunday, seven AM to eight PM. I can tell you that for many years, this site's been vacant. We've had everything from a Culvers to, I think, Old Country Buffet at one time, and a number of other uses, but the site has just sat idle for many years. Again, this is a close-up of the site. They had a small addition, I believe it was for an additional drive-through early on in my tenure, and at that time, we, we got the pedestrian connection with the bike rack, and they did do some site improvements at the time. So existing zoning, I one industrial, it's part of the Southfield Technological Corridor. Current zoning, proposed uses, some of the marijuana uses would be prohibited based on the proximity of residential to the east, or to the west, I'm sorry. This is a circulation plan. Based on comments from the planning commission, they added an additional escape lane along the southern route of the proposed new building, and it'll provide additional emergency access on all four sides of the property. One thing that's unique about this is they're having interior detailing, and they've provided accessible parking spaces for patrons. Typical detailing takes about fifteen to twenty minutes, and they have a lounge seating area with an accessible bathroom and accessible ingress egress of the vehicles. Then, once those are done, they would go into the conveyor belt for their car wash. This will be a new build, and this is a rendering of what they're proposing with their vacuum cleanings. They also have EV charging stations, and they have solar panels on top of the roof of the building. So I'd like to invite the petitioners to come up and fill in kind of the gaps from my, my brief overview and talk about your operations, what you plan there. Introduce yourselves, please.
Good evening to the council. My name is Jan Rubenstein. I'm an attorney for this project. My address is three zero six six five Northwestern Highway, Suite one sixty-five Farmington Hills, Michigan. So I don't have a lot to add from what Mr. Crowde indicated. I just want to actually introduce who's up here with me. This is John Gummel. He's a designer for the project. Standing over here is Art Dano. He's the owner of the property, and he is the individual hoping to acquire this endeavor and to move forward. Now, this is a unique space. The project that Mr. Dano is trying to introduce is a state-of-the-art, fully automated car wash with some very significant technology as well as green features, and we're very proud of those features. Some of them, the technology includes heated driveway. We're talking about including, and you could see in the site plan, there's a recycling system for the water. Approximately ninety percent of the water used would be recycled, so that's roughly almost forty-five hundred gallons of recycled water would be used every day. There's going to be solar panels, as Mr. Crowde alluded to, that'll assist with the electricity needs. There will also be in the external lights, solar lights, and there will be, as indicated, electric vehicle charging stations in the front driveway. So I think it's a very unique project. The design art landscaping, the green space is going to make this an unusual and hopefully a very profitable endeavor. It's going to improve the community. It's going to certainly improve this parcel, which has been vacant for quite some time. So with all that being said, if the panel has any questions for myself or for Mr. Dano or Mr. Gummel, we're open.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Mr. Mayor?
Do you have a name for, other than car wash? Do you have a name for, other than car wash?
Not yet, we're throwing a couple of names out there, so.
You're not with a chain or anything?
No, sir.
I mean, I think the rendering is gorgeous.
Thank you.
And if you want a fun fact on this property, this was the Red Cedars Lounge before Bank America. It was a hangout for, way back, old school hangout.
Well, my understanding, it was actually a car wash in the 90s. And I don't recall that, but Mr. Dano indicated that.
From what I, yeah, from some of the research, I was told it was a car wash at some point. So I don't know if it was before or after.
Alright, council, any, Mr. Brightwell?
This, it is impressive, obviously, this site has gone through changes. And I remember when Culvers looked at the site to deal with it. What, how much money are you putting into it as opposed to a traditional car wash that existed, let's say, two years ago, but now you're doing this? So kind of how much more money are you putting into this? How much more is it costing you to modernize it?
Are you saying, what is the build-out cost?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Are you asking what the build-out cost is?
Yeah.
Significant, a couple of million?
Excuse me, sorry.
Two million plus?
Okay, good. I do, I'm a finance guy, so I've kind of come down on that side of it, of the equation. So that's a good number, I appreciate it, thank you.
If I could just say something. So I've owned the building since 2001. We tried to lease it out, I mean, we tried to sell it, we tried to do so many different things. While we were trying to do all that, I've maintained it. I mean, I'm very, very particular as far as keeping it clean and picking up garbage. I mean, I have somebody there once a week cleaning it up, so, but we've had zero action, so. Trying to bring some life to that area.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think it's a great idea. It's a good location, there's not much down on that end to compete with. So you've got the car wash business down over there, for sure. But I mean, everything you're doing with it, with the solar panels and reusing the water, you know, that sustainability types of activities, I think it's just awesome for the city. I think it'll be a shining star for us here in Southfield. So I look forward to seeing you again and supporting this activity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I did have a question. Are you, because of the way that the lot sits, close to that corner, will there be two entrances? Is that, are you gonna have one from 9 Mile and then one from Telegraph?
Yes, correct. The main entrance would be Telegraph. But sometimes you just drive too fast, you pass it, and then, so the overflow entrance would be off of 9, uh, 10 Mile? 9 Mile?
If I could, through the chair, it's only an egress off of 9 Mile, so it's a one-way entrance from 9 Mile. And then you can see the flow up here. So the main entrance would be Telegraph, two cars stacking, pay station to enter. And then there'll be a secondary access for those that come up 9 Mile that come in. This was a pinch point that the Planning Commission was concerned about. So if someone got all the way in there and they wanted to turn around or escape, so they added this escape lane here to the south. And the 9 Mile also will provide for delivery trucks in turning radius to come into the site. But the 9 Mile is egress only, which is entrance only, and then exit, entrance and exit on Telegraph.
Okay.
And I could tell you the Plan Commission with the developers spent a lot of time on the circulation, making sure that this works.
Right, 'cause, you know, I'm used to the car washes having a separate entrance and exit, because once they go through the wash, there's a separate, is there? But it looks like that driveway on Telegraph is wide enough to have both.
Yeah, it's for two-way, two-way. Also, I think you guys talked about with the pay station and watching somebody, you can stop the conveyor belt depending on the detailing area that's on the inside. So they can...
It's fully automated.
Trying to find that one detail you had.
One more.
There's a little lag in this computer. Yeah, I guess it's earlier.
Where's the detailing?
Yeah, I'm trying to get to the floor plan.
I think it was before that.
Alright, so we're here. There it is. So right in this area, when you come in from the west, there's two detailing parking spaces. You said it typically takes 15, 20 minutes. So they have the ability, here's where the conveyor belt starts. So an employee would back up the car, and then they could enter into the conveyor belt system. And there's a control point here, the pay station and somebody, so that if someone wants to come in for detailing, they could park their cars, they have access to waiting area, and then when they're ready to exit into the car wash, they can control things here and here.
Okay.
So site plan?
Site plan.
The site plan?
Yes.
So where the solar panels are, the detailing is in this bay here.
No, I'm asking for the street view picture.
Oh, okay.
The elevation.
Is that what you want?
Yeah, I'm just trying to picture how it's coming into 9 Mile, but I see it.
So here's the 9 Mile entrance, that would be ingress here, coming in. And then this would be eliminated, they would have a center, two-way in and out here. And then they would exit back out that way.
The only other comment that I have, it's not a question, it's a comment, is the rendering you have looks very similar to Tommy's Express Car Wash.
Leave that alone right now.
I'm sorry?
Don't ask.
What was that?
Don't ask, leave that alone.
Okay.
We're not allowed to say anything.
Got it. Just that's what the rendering brought to mind, so.
Right there. Right here's my color. And we're gonna have, oh, it's in there actually, the sculpture and stuff, so.
Yeah, the art feature.
Where was that?
It's right in front of that orange car.
Oh, I see that, okay. Alright, council, any other questions or comments? Okay, we will see you back in a few weeks as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Good night.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, that takes care of all of our agenda items for discussion and our action. We have two council items. Item A is we need to appoint a delegate and an alternate to SEMCOG. Currently, I am the delegate. Councilwoman Taylor formerly was the delegate, or was the alternate. But if there is anyone who wishes for one or both, I can tell you that most of the meetings that they had were always during the workday. So if you worked during the day, there was no set rhyme or reason for the time or the day. It was based on different locations throughout southeast Michigan. And they discussed different things, and there was, you know, cities get votes, things like that. There was a discussion, and it's up to council if we want to have two council members, one as a delegate, one as an alternate. Or the alternate can also be somebody from city staff, such as like a city administrator, or deputy administrator, or someone else, if the council so chooses, but that will be a council decision. So, yes, Councilwoman Hoag?
I attended the SEMCOG 101, the introduction to all things concerning SEMCOG. Was very interested, and I looked up their committee meetings, the executive, but I know there are other committees as well. And so I wouldn't mind offering myself as a delegate if you don't want it. I know that you were the last one, but I'm interested.
I'm happy to share the wealth.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. So just throwing it out there that I would be interested.
I'll ask, is anybody else interested, or? Okay. Is there any, because this is something we're gonna have to vote on, but is anyone else interested in being a delegate or an alternate? Alright, so then we would just need a motion to appoint Councilwoman Hoag as the delegate and Councilwoman Haynes as the alternate for SEMCOG. And then that information would be sent over to them, and they'll do a whole probably intro as well. Councilman Hicks, do you have a question, or?
Motion?
Go. Go for it.
Mr. Chair, I move that Councilwoman Coretta Hoag be named as the delegate for SEMCOG, and Councilwoman Yolanda Haynes be the alternate for SEMCOG.
Thank you.
It has been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to appoint Councilwoman Hoag as the delegate and Councilwoman Haynes as the alternate to the Southeast Michigan Council of Government Representatives for the City of Southfield. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Madam?
Mr. President.
Wait a minute, Madam Clerk, is that, will you be sending that paperwork to SEMCOG?
I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion? You go here. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the travel expenses for Councilwoman Yolanda Haynes for her attendance on MML's newly elected official seminar. Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the travel expense report of Councilwoman Haynes for the MML newly elected official seminar. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Council, we will see what comments you have. Councilman Brightwell? Do you have any comments under council portion?
Yeah, well, I have a couple of questions. And I pretty much, these are current event kind of things for Mr. Zouin. There was something in the, it was either cranes or the Free Press, that indicated that the state had allocated X amount of money from the revenue, marijuana revenue, to various cities that have marijuana facility. And I understand, you know how much we're getting?
How much money did we get from the marijuana revenue? 118 and change. 118,000 and change.
Okay, good. There was a, there was also an article that indicated that the Michigan Public Service Commission asked consumers' power to start burying their power sources underground in a couple of counties. And obviously, it was all part of their rate, their sort of rate hike. And obviously, that's the quid pro quo. Have we, or has the county of Oakland asked DTE to start burying? Or is that on the agenda?
The answer is yes, we've had conversations with Detroit Edison about burying utility lines underground. We have had conversations with DTE regarding burying utility lines underground. I believe we're meeting with DTE April 5th or 6th. There has been some discussion about doing something as a pilot. But it is on our agenda, and DTE has expressed, you know, that it's something they're looking at as well.
We brought that up last, at Mackinac, when we met with DTE last May, late May. And I had a meeting with Jerry Norcia, the CEO of DTE, and I asked him again that Southfield be willing to pilot this. They are doing it in a neighborhood in Detroit. And he told me that the reason they're doing it there is because the infrastructure was so bad that they're rebuilding the delivery of electricity in that neighborhood, so they're going ahead and doing it underground.
Right, right. Well, and obviously, the Public Service Commission has the handle over consumers. And there's, they were just a trial, I think, about $9 million. They are setting aside for those various counties. And obviously, does it make sense, well, is it? And well, obviously, you guys would know more about the strategy in or the county, the county executive, with respect to DTE doing something in Oakland. And obviously, from our vantage point, it'd be, you know, Southfield would be ideal. So, okay, the answer is, it is in the works, and we are, it's top of mind with our elected leaders, I mean, appointed leaders.
The answer is yes, we've talked to them about it, and we're happy to be one of the first ones in. And when they make the offer, we'll be for it. And part of our discussion has been the service line to individual homes being part of it. I think for DTE, this is, you know, for the last, it seems like every year, they fall short on what the Public Service Commission approves in their request. When those items aren't approved for the request, that means there's a lack of investment in their system. They can only work with the resources and those rate increases approved by the Public Service Commission. And I think most of us this past year was probably one of the larger increases we've gotten. So, you know, that's all part of that equation, what the Public Service Commission approves and such.
And I kind of know the handle the Public Service Commission has. I used to have to brief our treasurer before he went to testify before the Public Service Commission. Can we get, this is, you know, this is a hot issue, because my neighbor asked me, you know, Dan, why are we getting so many, why we get the outages? You know, so can we get anything that indicate what was proposed for DTE for this fiscal year in their budget to do underground? I know a lot of it is, what I read today about consumer, it is a pilot program. They will, I think the Public Service Commission allocated 9.3 million. But is, anything that we can get to know what's coming down the pipe with respect to burying a lot of this cable, I mean, wires?
Certainly, when we, you know, after our meeting, when we get something, we're happy to share it. I will say, there are private homes that have buried service lines today in Southfield. When we were out on-site with them, some folks have already paid for that. And it can be done. But what was explored was doing it at a very reduced price.
Okay, good. Alright, I didn't intend to catch y'all go out with that, but I just thought about it. It was part of my reading, and I don't see you too much in person, so. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Councilman Haynes?
Yes. Just a quick reminder that the Friends of the Southfield Public Library will hold its monthly book sale at the bookshelf located in the library, beginning March 6th this week. You can visit the city or the library's website for the specific times for each day. Sorry, I'm getting a little tired here. Okay, and also, I would like to congratulate the Southfield Public Library, the Friends, the Martin Luther King Junior Task Force, the Southfield Art Commission, the Martin Luther King Junior Task Force, the Southfield Art Commission, the Southfield Historical Society, and especially the Southfield Parks and Recs Department for a fun, fantastic field February celebrating Black History Month. These programs celebrate the rich history of African, the African-American culture, recognizing the struggles, the empowerment, the resilience of a people that persevered through the fight for freedom, also showing, showing the importance that other cultures played in that role. And if you had a chance to attend any of these programs, they were very good, especially those at the library, and also some here at the, the pavilion. And I look forward to next year having a growing and expanding program to celebrate the diverse cultures here in our city, Southfield, the center of it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yep. Real brief, I like this time of year, because we kicked the year off in January celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King. We move into February for Black History Month, and now we're in March, which is Women's History Month. So we have a real block of time to just reflect on individuals who have made various contributions to our society over the years. So please take some time to, you know, just study up on some, some of our women in history, voting rights, sex, and suffrage, things of that nature. Women have just had a huge impact on this country more than we might acknowledge sometimes, so I just wanted to put that reminder out for everyone. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilman Hicks?
Just piggybacking off Councilman Cruz, just want to wish, I wish everyone a happy March Reading Month. I tried to read something that doesn't allow me to think, and also something a little bit more serious, so I encourage you all to not only read to those young in your families, but continue your own personal growth and development.
Well, I'm gonna piggyback off of Councilman Hicks, because with this being Reading Month, Councilman Brightwell caught me in the car, was reading before I came in here, I love to read, so thank you for that, I actually didn't know it was Reading Month. But I actually wanted to congratulate and thank Madam Clerk for her first election, to you, for your success, to your team, and congratulation on getting you a deputy, so that she can help you with all that work that you got, but we just thank you for delivering a great election, your first election. Thank you, and looking forward to more.
Alright, and it's funny, I'll, I'll piggyback off that. I was gonna thank the, our clerk on a successful election. I know that the first ones, this was probably an easier one than we'll experience later in the year, but, you know, there weren't any problems, so, and it was successful, so thank you very much to you and your, your team, and to all the, it's not just the clerk's office that is, that does, works the elections, code enforcement, police, we have Parks and Rec, we have, it's an all-hands-on-deck, because our city is so large, so thank you to, to you and to everyone who helped out. There's, there was a number of events coming up, and other, and some other announcements, but yesterday, Parks and Rec had a winter fest that was well-attended, it was a nice event, so thank you to, to our Parks and Recs Department for that. And also, we talked about Black History Month, and then this is, you know, Women's History Month, so Southfield was ranked as a top U.S. city for black women to flourish financially by Money Geek Magazine. I think this is the second time that Southfield has won this award, or gotten this honor, so that is, that is, out of 164 cities, Southfield came in the top spot, which is definitely a nice thing to brag about. Our police department is accepting applications for their Citizens Academy, which is a free 11-week program, where you can learn about all the different things the police do. They have 25 spots, it's a, again, a free program, you can learn everything that they do, from traffic stops to crime scene, investigation, things like that. You can contact the police department, go into the lobby for an application, and ask some additional questions, should you have any. This Wednesday, Southfield is also hosting a job fair in the pavilion here from 10:00 to 2:00. It will be jobs in the city, as well as jobs within the city of Southfield, for, to work at the city, but then also, there are companies that are located in Southfield that will be here as well, that are recruiting. So if you know somebody looking for a job, or looking for somebody for, you know, who's looking to, for a better job, they can come here on March 6th, this Wednesday, between 10:00 and 2:00 in the pavilion. The other thing that I wanted to mention was that on March 8th, on Friday, Southfield Parks and Rec is also hosting a senior vendor fair here in the pavilion, the same timeframe from, this will be on March 8th from 10:00 to 12:00 here in the pavilion, and there will be a lot of information for seniors to learn and to partake in things that are available to them. And last, but certainly not least, there's a, Southfield Parks and Rec is actually hosting the Detroit Symphony Orchestra, right here on campus on March 20th at 7:00 P.M. You can, tickets are available through Parks and Rec, it's going to be a flute and strings symphony, I guess. It'll take place right here in Parks and Rec, tickets are $15 per person, and you can purchase tickets on this, either through the, looks like you can purchase tickets through the DSO's website, and you can call them, or the city of Parks and Rec for more information. There's, there's another, but I'll, I'll leave that up to the mayor, but there's, other than that, you know, with the, the nice weather, we are getting out there, and just, you know, keep in mind that there's more people walking and riding bikes and being on scooters, so please be mindful when you're driving through the city. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I also, Councilwoman Hoag beat me to it, but I was gonna congratulate Clerk Jackson on a smooth election, first time out. Happy for, for you and the staff, I did come in the next day and thank the staff for their, their efforts. Talking about Black History Month, we culminated the month last Thursday night, the 29th, with the kickoff of the, the book, Recognizing President Obama. The book project is about five years in the making, interrupted by COVID. There are a number of people who wrote reflections, you can, if you'd like, the book comes in hard copy or soft bound, and it is $40 for soft cover. And you can contact Diana Pegler, the local sororities, AKAs, the Deltas, Empowerment Church, the Southfield Lethrop Optimists Club, and the National Congress of Black Women were the sponsors of the event. It was very nice, I represented all of you there on Thursday evening for the program and the reception that followed. It was really a very nice affair, and really tapped off a month full of observations in Black Heritage. Also, there, one other thing that the police department is doing, you know, they do many community outreach, so this month, part of Reading Month, is badges and books, and they'll be out giving books away. Not sure of the locations, usually it's at Evergreen Plaza and a couple of other places.
It'll be every Tuesday during the month of March at Meyer from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
I have no items this evening, sir, thank you.
Alright, Madam Attorney?
Yes. Good evening, counsel. I just have one item, the city of Southfield was recently served with a lawsuit, the plaintiff and the party is Management Solution Holdings LLC, Erin Morris and Shannon Steele, is currently in the federal eastern district court, and pursuant to section 6.2 of the city charter, I just asked that the council approve the city attorney's office, the request to defend the city in this matter.
So moved, Mr. President.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Cruz, to authorize the attorney to take whatever steps are necessary to defend this current litigation as presented. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Anything else? Madam Attorney? Anything else?
Not right now, no.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. First of all, I want to just thank you all for your remarks concerning the success of our election, I truly appreciate it, and I, during that whole time, several of you, almost all of you wished me well, and came in and came by and asked me about the process, and I just am so glad that we had a great initial success. The election still will be canvassed by Oakland County, and once the official canvas is over, it will be declared a true success. I'm very confident in that. I just want to also thank all of the people, and I don't want to be redundant, because President Mandelbaum mentioned it, people from the schools, the police, our code department, part-timers that we have, municipal employees that work overtime, the mandatory, not just overtime, but the mandatory overtime, that the staff in the clerk's office committed to work. We actually worked 15 days straight, along with several other individuals, including overtime on those days, so it was definitely a marathon and not a sprint. I wanted to be at home cheering on the Lions on a couple of those Sundays, but this was more important, and I just want to, again, thank the public for coming out to voting. We issued approximately 10,800 absentee ballots, upon which returned were about 9,500, approximately 87 percent. That day, actually, the actual voting day, February the 27th, voting Tuesday, we had about 5,000 walk-ups, so absentee ballots are outpacing our in-person voting at this point, two to one. So just remember that voting and keeping our democracy alive is very, very important, and as we go throughout this year, a presidential election, I will make sure to engage the public in ways where they don't forget that. And just again, I want to say thank you so much for your support, and thank you to the residents and citizens that came out to exercise their right. Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Good. Thank you. We've heard from our treasurer, we have nothing to schedule. Counsel, do you have any other, anything else that has to be brought to us this evening? Alright, this meeting is adjourned.